June 5, 2025, regular session meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Fauntler Ridley.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a clarity and justice for all.
All right, we just have a few announcements. As Mr. Triplett mentioned at Monday's work session, due to changes in state law that will affect our schools for the 25-26 school year, the administration recommended that an additional policy review meeting be scheduled during the next few weeks. You received an email yesterday, but I wanted to announce publicly that the meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, June 26, at 10:00 a.m. in this boardroom. Also, Mayor Jacobs is hosting his Fourth Annual Night of Champions event next Tuesday, June 10, from 6 to 8 at Covenant Park, and will be celebrating the achievements of Knox County High School athletes who have triumphed in T-SAA state championships. Board members, if you plan to attend, please let Terry know or RSVP directly to the email you receive from Rhonda Smithson in Mayor Jacobs' office. We do have one change to the agenda. You received an email earlier today, but I wanted to mention that Item 6D2 on the consent agenda has been withdrawn at the request of Emerald Charter Schools. Are there any other requested changes?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplett. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, Ms. Coney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 5, Consideration of 2025 through 2030 Strategic Plan.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Reverend Butler.
Yes, thank you. I had asked this question during one of our committee meetings. Two things and more, possibly. But with the disparities in education outcome that we've experienced over the last several years, I wanted to make sure that we would be able to see and understand what type of strategic planning actions are we taking to help decrease that also. Because we had the Region 5 strategic plan done previously to address some of those issues, how is that interwoven into our current strategic plan for the district?
Ms. Lotner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Reverend Butler. So I will begin, but members of the Strategic Planning Committee, please join me, fill in any blanks that I leave out as well. And I appreciate you lifting up the question, Reverend Butler, because I think it highlights how cohesive and comprehensive the approach the committee took to strategic planning can be. So I'll take the questions separately. In looking at just education outcomes in general across the district and being aware of where achievement gaps or gaps in behavioral outcomes lie and where those interventions would reside in the strategic plan itself. I don't know if everybody has the plan in front of them tonight, but if you do, I would take a look at Pages 26 and 27 under the Success for Every Student goal under that priority. You'll see under Objective 4B, a focus on strengthening and streamlining academic interventions. Those of you who have seen our annual action plan over the past couple of years know that when we report out on the outcomes of that work, it usually looks like us reporting out on individual student subgroups and how well we've closed achievement gaps or moved the needle to closing achievement gaps by student subgroup in ELA and in math. So you'll see that kind of continuation, that reported progress in that space from an academic standpoint. As we think about just access to general classroom instruction, that tier-one learning environment, and really making sure that our behavioral practices are geared toward incentivizing, making sure every student has as much time in the general education setting as possible accessing that tier-one learning. That is really where you're going to look at Objective 4C and all of those interventions, all of those wraparound supports, the whole child learning teams and support teams and the work that schools are doing just to help inject as much support as possible into our school and student populations. And so that would be, I think, my district-wide answer. In terms of the Region 5 strategic plan, and this is something that I think is very exciting about the framework of the 2030 strategic plan, is that it allows for those initiatives to be integrated throughout the document. And so you'll see references to implementation of, at this point, it's wild to think this, those Year 3 outcomes because we're in Year 3, or we will be in Year 3 next year of the Region 5 strategic plan. You'll see that referenced under Success for Every Student and those priority-based objectives. You'll see it referenced under the Great Educator objectives because there's some work we're doing in that space as well. And you'll also see it called out explicitly in two other priorities, Excellence in Foundational Skills and also in Career Empowerment and Preparation. So anywhere you see a crosswalk under, over the next five years, that language there, and it says Implement the Goals Laid Out in the Region 5 Strategic Plan, you can see where we're going to be very focused on making sure that work is still conducted and fulfilled in a meaningful way as well.
One other question. This may be the superintendent's answer. When the group came and asked about the quarterly reports, how are we planning on doing that going into next year?
Thank you, Reverend Butler. We have continued to post those. I think, I believe they're semester by semester. We have those on our website available. We've had members of a few organizations reach out to ask how to access those, and we've shown them where those are. So we've continued to report those and will continue to moving forward. But I don't know, Ms. Lotner, if you want to add to that.
Thank you. The only thing I would add is that, yes, they are semesterly. And so we've worked with a couple of community organizations just to land on a frequency that would
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
7D, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G410, Retirement as amended.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
7E, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G461, Sick and Bereavement Leave as amended.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion on this item? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
7F, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G462, Personal and Professional Leave as amended.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
7G, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G467, Paid Parental Leave as amended.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
7H, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I171, Interscholastic Athletics as amended.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
7I, Approve First Read of Knox County Board of Education Policy I330, Senior Classification as amended.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. I see we have discussion. Reverend Butler.
Yes, I won't belabor it, but I think that we've gone halfway. I think that we either have competition or we don't, and competition meaning against one, students against one another, where they're going to be placed. We could do the Latin terms, just using grade GPA, and decide how we would celebrate each student or celebrate them all. So I'm not going to vote for it, because I think we've only gone halfway.
Ms. Templeton?
I just want clarification, Reverend Butler. I just want to make sure that I understand what you're thinking. You're thinking GPA and looking at GPA levels? Or are you thinking keep the valedictorian and incorporating the Latin with the valedictorian? I was curious what exactly your preferred method would be.
I'll try to make it very quick. My understanding of what the collegiate process is, is that you're counting certain classification by your GPA, it's not by your standing in the class, whether you're top 5% or top 10% or whatever. And that's what I'm saying is, is that the way that, if we're going to say that you are being measured for a classification, it would be based on whatever GPA that is determined. And I know that there are some issues across the district of how that would play out. But we, one of the major things that I heard was, is that the competition was not, was not the way that we wanted our students to decide how they're going to experience high school, or middle school for that matter, and what classes they're going to take. If it's the GPA that is the determination, then they're just going, competing against themselves with the GPA and not against one another. So as long as you have a percentage or a number, you're still going to have that same issue. And that's, once again, I just think that we haven't gone all the way. We've gone a little of the way, and that's the reason why I just won't vote for it.
Does that make sense? I see it as buckets, like a 4.0 or a 4.5, and anybody who falls, what he, my understanding, what you're saying is whoever falls in that bucket of a 4.0 or whatever the number is or 4.5 is what he's, as opposed to the top 10% or the top 5%. Do we have any more discussion? All right. Why don't we do a roll call vote on this, just so, for clarification? Thank you, Ms. Coney.
Absolutely. Dr. Butler?
No.
Ms. Templeton?
Yes.
Ms. Fontana Ridley?
Yes.
Ms. Bike?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Bike, would you like to change your pass vote? That is seven yes votes, one no vote, and one pass.
All right, motion carries.
7J, Approve First Read of Knox County Board of Education Policy I440, Wellness Policy as amended.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? Ms. Fontana Ridley?
I would like to submit an amendment to this policy revisions. I want to add online, I thought I headed up, sorry.
And there are two versions attached.
Right, yeah. That's what I'm looking at. Yeah. Thank you for that. On page three.
It would be version 2 that we're looking at.
Version 2.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So version 2 is Ms. Fontana Ridley's, her, yeah.
Yeah.
It's her version.
Yes. On page three, line 32, I would like to include in that sentence, nor imposed upon. And the meaning being that have been, from my entire teaching career, it bothers me when I see kids having to walk laps on the playground because of behavior in the classroom. I know that it's, it's an effective way, but it kind of puts a Band-Aid on what the problem is, and I would like to see more effort in changing the behavior that made them have to walk laps than actually just keep walking the laps, walking the laps, walking the laps.
So it's almost being withheld from them by making them do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's physical activity, but the definition of unstructured is, unstructured.
I got one point of order. So when the motion was made, was that made on originally or version 2?
That's a great question, since there's two. It should be on version 1. Yeah.
I did not realize there were two versions there.
Yeah, yeah. It's a great question.
Yeah. I'm, 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 I'm.
Voting on version 2. Okay, so, so the motion, and we will be voting on, will be version 2, which is, if Mr. Triplett is okay with that as well. Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah. Oh, did you have the same thing, Ms. Templeton? The same question? Okay, awesome, awesome. All right. Sorry.
I wasn't sure I was voting.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So is that the motion will be for the version 2 or version 10?
Version 2.
Yeah. Okay, sorry about that. Go on.
Oh, that's okay. I was just going to bring up that the two premier organizations in the United States, SHAPE, which is the American Society of Health Physical Education, and NASPE, the National Association for Sports and Physical Education, have both published positions on this specifically in their, in their, I wouldn't say policies, but their positions on certain things. And if anybody needs that, I can send it to you in an email, and.
Cool.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Triplett?
Dr. Wilson, question for you related to this. Anything that we do that this could create a problem for, you know? PE, you got to finish making these laps, or, you know, anything like that, that's going to set ourselves up for somebody to come back and say, the policy says you can't impose this on us, and this is punishment, anything like that?
So I would say, I mean, I don't have a large concern about the addition to that. I think it reiterates what's already stated in the language, and again, this, this policy and the language in here being crafted around the change and the requirement for the physical activity, the new piece being that, that term of unstructured, which Ms. Fontana Ridley has already labeled, is, again, we can't impose, right? Like, these are, these are the two things. I think it restates what's already there in terms of the unstructured, and because it is contextualized in the policy and in the law around this kind of recess physical activity time period, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Triplett, thank you for asking that question. I wanted to check on that. And Ms. Fontana Ridley, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's a good, not harmful, reiteration that physical activity should be a positive thing, not a negative thing. And personally, it has always bothered me. I have one kid who's walked a lot of laps at recess, which she earned. I'm not saying she didn't, but I don't want, I don't like that negative association with physical activity, so I support this. Thank you.
Awesome. Anybody else? All right. Well, with that, we'll go ahead and vote. We are, again, voting on version 2. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Item 7K, Approve First Read and To Rescind, Knox County Board of Education Policy J340, Student Insurance Program.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
8A, Approve Consolidated Grant Application and Receipt of Funds from the Tennessee Department of Education for Fiscal Year 2026, Federal Title 1A, Title 1D, Title 1N, Title 2A, Title 3, and Title 4, in the amount of $18,857,717.40.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Bike. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, Approve Consolidated Grant Application and Receipt of Funds from the Tennessee Department of Education for Fiscal Year 2026, IDEA Part B, in the amount of $15,394,458, and IDEA Preschool, in the amount of $472,571.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, Approve Tennessee Department of Education Fiscal Year 2026, Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Grant, in the amount of $978,536.14.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, Approve Tennessee Department of Education Fiscal Year 2025, Additional Targeted Support and Improvement 24 Grant, in the amount of $200,000.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
8E, Approve Second Amended and Restated Memorandum of Understanding with Simon Youth Foundation Incorporated regarding the continued development and operation of the Dr. Paul L. Kelly Volunteer Academy, and Receipt of Grant Funds in the amount of $100,000.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Templeton. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
9A, Approve Terms and Conditions and Privacy Policy with Kiddam Incorporated for the Purchase of Kiddam 6th-8th Grade Science Curriculum at a Cost of $3,400,000.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
9B, Approve Contract with Lewis Group Architects for the Design of the New K-8th Grade School for the Mechanicsville, Lawnsdale, and Beaumont Area, in the amount of $3,256,000.
So moved.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. And Ms. Templeton, I see, you got your light on over there.
I do have my light on. First, I want to thank Dr. Adams for creating an RFQ that is unlike any other. You and your team went line by line, looking for ways to make this a new and novel opportunity for architects to apply to, to be super creative. And I realize that the RFQ is approved through the county, and I will certainly be voting for this, and my hope is that Lewis Group will be a fantastic architect and will take into account all of those details that your department really took a lot of time putting in there, just to be creative and to create a K-8 that is innovative and will set the standard for what is to come. So I wanted to say thank you and just put it on record that I really appreciate it.
Good. Yeah, Dr. Adams.
Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Templeton. I, Mr. Shover is here, so I want to give him a shout out, because he's an architect by trade, but he really thought outside of the box and really got a good understanding of what this looks like. He's worked very closely with the academic team, our special education department, and he's done an exceptional job of getting an understanding of how we're moving forward with the design of schools and RFQ. So I'd like to thank Mr. Shover for the work he's done as well.
Thank you, Mr. Shover. Thank you, Dr. Adams and Ms. Templeton, for highlighting that. I really appreciate that. Have any discussion on this item? All right, well, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
9C, Approve Contracts with Amerigus Healthcare Staffing Incorporated, ESS South Central LLC, and Stellar Therapy Services for Provision of Supplemental Staffing Services for the Term of July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
8E, Approve Second Amended and Restated Memorandum of Understanding with Simon Youth Foundation Incorporated regarding the Continued Development and Operation of the Dr. Paul L. Kelly Volunteer Academy, and Receipt of Grant Funds in the amount of $100,000.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Templeton. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
9A, Approve Terms and Conditions and Privacy Policy with Kiddam Incorporated for the Purchase of Kiddam 6th-8th Grade Science Curriculum at a Cost of $3,400,000.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
9B, Approve Contract with Lewis Group Architects for the Design of the New K-8th Grade School for the Mechanicsville, Lawnsdale, and Beaumont Area, in the amount of $3,256,000.
So moved.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. And Ms. Templeton, I see, you got your light on over there.
I do have my light on. First, I want to thank Dr. Adams for creating an RFQ that is unlike any other. You and your team went line by line, looking for ways to make this a new and novel opportunity for architects to apply to, to be super creative. And I realize that the RFQ is approved through the county, and I will certainly be voting for this, and my hope is that Lewis Group will be a fantastic architect and will take into account all of those details that your department really took a lot of time putting in there, just to be creative and to create a K-8 that is innovative and will set the standard for what is to come. So I wanted to say thank you and just put it on record that I really appreciate it.
Go ahead. Yeah, Dr. Adams.
Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Templeton. I, Mr. Shover is here, so I want to give him a shout out, because he's an architect by trade, but he really thought outside of the box and really got a good understanding of what this looks like. He's worked very closely with the academic team, our special education department, and he's done an exceptional job of getting an understanding of how we're moving forward with the design of schools and RFQ. So I'd like to thank Mr. Shover for the work he's done as well.
Thank you, Mr. Shover. Thank you, Dr. Adams and Ms. Templeton, for highlighting that. I really appreciate that. Have any discussion on this item? All right, well, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
9C, Approve Contracts with Amerigus Healthcare Staffing Incorporated, ESS South Central LLC, and Stellar Therapy Services for Provision of Supplemental Staffing Services for the Term of July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. Seeing there's none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10A, approved resolution donating certain land to the Commission of Knox County, Tennessee, for its reservation for the sole purposes of construction, use, and maintenance of the Gibbs Pedestrian Bridge and related improvements and further reserving said donated land and additional land owned by Knox County for said purposes.
A motion by Mr. Wright, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion on this item? All right. Seeing there's none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10B, approved renewal charter agreement with Emerald Academy through June 30, 2035, pursuant to Board Resolution 25001, dated January 9, 2025.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Ms. Bike, do we have a discussion?
Thank you. I don't have much discussion on this, just that there were definitely some things about the review about Emerald Academy, and so I will pass on this one and not be voting in favor or necessarily against it.
Thank you, Ms. Bike. Do we have any other discussion? Why don't we do roll call, just so we capture everybody's vote?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Templeton?
Pass.
Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
Pass.
Ms. Bike?
Pass.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Butler, would you like to change your pass vote? Ms. Templeton?
Aye.
Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
Aye.
Ms. Bike? That is five yes votes and four pass.
All right, motion carries. Mr. Triplet, I believe we've got a public forum speaker.
We do. Candace Bannister, if you'll state your name, county residence, and you'll have three minutes.
First employer for the job he had between graduating from college and starting grad school in the fall. The content that's of great interest to me is that it's pertinent to my concerns regarding the failure of Knox County Schools to even do an investigation when 43 stakeholders wrote letters of concern regarding the admin from my younger son's high school. I asked my older son if he remembered what this was about, but he said he has no recollection, but he was certain it did not result in a death. Mr. Bannister, our company's Human Resources Department has been notified of concerns regarding your location of employment. The company takes all concerns very seriously and appreciates you bringing this matter to our attention. Human Resources has completed the investigation into the concerns. As a result, information was obtained from you and various other sources. After reviewing the information provided, we have concluded our investigation. Based on the results, please be advised appropriate corrective action has been taken where necessary. Thank you for notifying us of this matter. Please let me know should you have any questions or future concerns. Sincerely, and it's signed by their HR manager. This is what employers who care about their stakeholders, employees, students, customers, and everybody else, parents, do. They acknowledged his concern, initiated an investigation, took a procreation, and then asked their employee for, thanked them for notifying them of this issue. It makes zero sense that a school system the size of Knox County did absolutely none of these things in conjunction with 43 complaints about this administrator. Absolutely nothing. A year ago, Dr. Ricewick told me this man has a very clean record. How is that even possible when 43 people wrote of their concerns regarding his behavior